Twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Dayton let the roll call show that Councilmember Mosher is absent this evening. I'll look for a motion to excuse her, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to excuse Councilwoman Mosher.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on to approval of the city council meeting minutes from July fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Councilmember Vogart.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have no bills this evening, so we'll move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Councilmember Hanson.
All of the agenda is presented.
Second.
The motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council, please step up to the podium. You have two minutes within which to do so and just state your name and address. Further, Clerk, if you would.
Send to Benson, four three eight Washington Street.
Can you pull it? You want to pull that down there? There you go. There you go. That should help.
Okay.
Or maybe you may just pull out, too.
That's all right. I'm real short. I mean, I'm... I just want to thank the police. They've started doing a drive-by in our driveway because we've had issues with one of the residents and they've been really supportive to help us out and make us feel safer. All of us are carrying pepper spray. It's that bad. So, I just want to thank them. Okay?
I didn't... I may have interrupted you. I don't know. Did you get her name and address?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. At this point, we will close public comment and we'll move on to approval of tonight's consent agenda, which entails the county act rail office building off-site water main Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to a discussion of downtown with our DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I just got a couple of quick things for you tonight. First is the Buy Michigan Now Festival is going to be happening this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. So, we're very excited. That's finally here. We've been working with them pretty much nonstop for the last probably ten months, getting the festival to South Line and then doing all the planning. We just had another meeting today to kind of go over some final details. So, really looking forward to that event over the weekend. I believe there's over a hundred vendors, I don't remember the exact number, that are planning to be there, but there's going to be axe throwing. They've got some live music that'll be happening as well, a number of food trucks. So, yeah, it's going to be a great event. Just a quick report on the farmer's market from last weekend. That was great. You know, with the motor fest happening, there's always an increased number of people that are walking through the market. Maybe some people aren't buying, but the exposure is great for the market. So, we're always grateful for that event as well. But with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for DDA Director Nate Mack? Councilmember Vogart.
Any word on the chargers when they'll be brought online?
No, I went and looked at them today to see if they were up yet. They're not. I've contacted the individual that I have for the state charging company. They haven't been able to give me any firm feedback on when they'll be done. So, I thought they would be electrified once they had paid their final bill to DTE, but that was over a month ago now. So, I'm not sure.
Thanks.
Councilmember Kibble.
Just with the Buy Michigan thing going on, what is the actual footprint that that is going to end up consuming?
Yeah, so it will be on Lafayette from Whipple Street to Elm Place, and then it'll be going to Wells on Ten Mile, and then a little bit kind of by Norm's heading the other direction.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So, Nate, while you were off, I was approached by one of the farmer's market vendors who was a little distressed at the condition of the porta john that's in the south parking lot there. I contacted the DPW and, you know, I'm assuming that's on the same schedule. They told me that's not one that they're responsible for, that they thought you handled that, but since you weren't in your office, it looks like they may have taken care of it, or the vendor came out to take care of it. But then I heard from that same vendor again today that the inside probably needs to be hosed out significantly. So, yeah, in light of the fact that we have the big event this weekend, maybe somebody should take a look at it, just make sure it's all good to go.
Okay, yep. I'll contact the vendor.
Okay.
Thanks.
Anything else? Very good. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll move on to the fire chief's report with Chief Conrad this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. So, incidents to date, this is from Thursday, July eighteenth to Thursday, July twenty-eighth today, eight hundred and forty-eight calls, thirty-eight incidents, nineteen EMS calls, one fire, thirteen service calls, two good intent calls, and three false alarms. You will also notice that we had a spray park last Thursday, and we got visited by three different media outlets and were spotlighted on TV. So, it was a great opportunity for our city to be highlighted, and I wanted to recognize our firefighters for suffering in the heat in navy blue and doing a great job.
It was a great event. Any questions for the fire chief? Councilmember Dilke.
I just wanted to say you represented us well on TV.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thanks a lot, chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to the police chief's report this evening with Lieutenant Cedarland.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, council. I have a couple of things. First, I want to recognize Officer Walton. He can't be here tonight, but he is retiring tomorrow. It'll be his last day. He put twenty-seven years of service with us. He was an asset and he will be missed. This past weekend, obviously, as you guys are aware, we had a busy weekend with motor fest, Christmas in July, and the farmer's market. I spoke to the officers that provided security for the event, and they said there were no problems reported to them. Over the past couple of weeks, we have had three UTA's, which are stolen autos, out of Clonaklaw. Detective Baker has worked very hard on this case, identified several suspects, but I want to remind the citizens to remember to lock their car doors, not leave any valuables in plain sight, and not to leave their car keys in their car overnight. That's just a reminder. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay, Lieutenant. Regarding Officer Walton there, I just want to recognize Officer Walton for his years of service here. He's been a real asset to the city, the residents, the businesses, and obviously to the department. I mean, he filled in as the school resource officer for a period of time as well, DOT inspector, and a lot of other hats over the course of the years. So, certainly wish him the very best in his retirement. He's definitely earned it. We're certainly going to miss him, though. Any other comments for the lieutenant here? Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also thank you for the assistance that you are providing our seniors and those individuals who may be vulnerable in the community, whether they are living in a, you know, a housing project, whether they're living in a neighborhood, or have a business or other entity. I think sometimes people don't realize what the police department does behind the scenes. We had a safe weekend because of everything that you are doing, and that's a lot of commitment from that department. That's a lot of ours, and I want to thank you and please, you know, send my appreciation back to the department for sure. But thank you for everything, everything.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Vogart.
Thank you. Regarding the car thefts, were all three thefts due to keys being left in the vehicles?
Yes.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. At this point, move on to unfinished business, which is the revised city manager evaluation. And we brought this up for discussion a meeting or two previously, and we're going to go through a little more discussion tonight. So, who's going to lead the discussion on this?
I can. Well, we passed this out. We gave everybody a copy. You got it again in your packet, and this is our suggestion for how we can, not only what the evaluation will entail, but what we're hoping the evaluation process is. So, we're hoping that we can have a discussion on that today and see if everyone has comments or changes they'd like to see, and hopefully we can nail this down because we are coming up on it before it happens. So, I can just, if you want to just open it up and...
Sure. Let me just see if anybody has any questions based on their review of the document. First off, I want to thank Councilmembers Kurtzwell, Mosher, and Dilke for their efforts in putting this together. So, hopefully this will provide greater benefit going forward and looking for input, feedback from the other council members here if they have any questions for the developers there. Councilmember Hanson.
Not really a question so much as just a statement and some feedback. I really appreciate the self-evaluation being part of the evaluation process going forward. I think that that will be a great way for the city manager to remind council some of his achievements and projects that he's been successful with throughout the year, and especially for council members that maybe missed the meeting or had forgotten about, you know, some of those initiatives. I think this will be a good evaluation tool for council to have. So, that's my feedback on that.
Anyone else? The only comment I have is looking at the timeline for this and the proposed start of the effort here, looking at the fact that the city manager would complete a self-evaluation addressing each section by August thirty-first, which is a Sunday, so that would be the first of September. If you look at the estimated durations for the remaining tasks, it doesn't, the compiled document with all the feedback and everything else, doesn't end up being presented or available to the council members until September twenty-first, one day before the meeting, which would take place on the twenty-second. So, I would recommend that the sequence of activities be moved back by two weeks, that basically the self-evaluation would be completed by August, August eighth there, instead of the, I'm sorry, August eleventh instead of the twenty-first there. That'll give us time for everybody to get the documents together, for the city clerk to put the document together, for everyone to read them and be prepared to discuss it at the council meeting on the twenty-second of September, so that we meet the deadline for the anniversary date for the city manager, which is October first. Would be my recommendation.
Could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can you make that calendar?
It might be difficult right now with other aspects or things that are going on, but I guess for me, looking at this, I'll let council finish, but I would just answer that for right now.
Okay. So, if we have no other comments from the council members, I would like to hear the input. I'm sorry, Councilmember Dilke.
I just wanted to talk about what you said. So, you're saying, so I don't know why we didn't do this, but we should, instead of using dates, we should be using, you know, the second whatever of the month, so this continues into, you know, it could be used for any year. So, if we said like the second Monday, so you're saying the second Monday of August, you thought...
Right.
That is your suggestion?
Yeah.
For the city manager? And then you're saying that we will review those and be ready to speak on that on the, you're saying that we'd be ready to talk about that on the twenty-fifth, which would be the fourth Monday?
What I'm looking at is, I mean, you said he would have it ready by the thirty-first.
Yeah.
I'm just going to use the dates, okay, which in essence is the first of, first of September. I'm saying, I moved it back two weeks, picking the seventeenth, which is a Sunday, so it would be ready by the eighteenth, and we would turn it over at that point to the city clerk, who's going to distribute it and everything, and then get it out to the council members so they go through their evaluation. The process just begins two weeks earlier, assuming that the city manager can have his portion done. If not, I mean, we can still go with the timeline you have, and we could make whatever adjustment to the salary retroactive. I'd much rather have us make the deadline and have it ready on his anniversary date, personally. This is the only reason for moving that forward.
Paul, what do you think?
So, just before I open it up to Paul, I just want to make sure there are any other comments from the council members, because I would like to hear the city manager's input. I know that he's been at some of your meetings. Is that accurate?
He was at one of them, yes.
Okay. So, are there any other comments from the council members? Okay. Paul, if you weigh in with your comments on it, the process?
Yeah, sure. Yes, I was at one of the meetings, and I actually created the framework, I guess, for this one, and I think Lisa may have changed or wordsmithed some of the other things, I think, changed bullet points or whatever, to bullet points or whatever. You know, I do think the self-evaluation is a good idea. I don't necessarily think, though, that the way it's done or the way it's written here is the best way to go. I think if you decide that you're going to do it in parallel, that the manager is doing an evaluation on himself and the council members are doing an evaluation on the manager, then that information gets presented to the city clerk, then that information can get compiled and reviewed at an upcoming meeting, and discussion can take place, because I've never seen or I just don't think it's right that the manager does an evaluation on himself and then seven council members critique the manager's evaluation. That, to me, just doesn't seem right. I think it would be more important for council to do the evaluation. I think that's, to be blunt, that's a responsibility of councils, to do the evaluation on me, to know what I do, to know the processes, to know the things that I complete or don't complete, not me giving you the information, then you critique all that information. I think it's better if council would do it on their own. But I think a self-evaluation is a good idea, and that's just my opinion.
Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Respectfully, I disagree. It's not uncommon for managers, whether it's a city manager or a high-level executive, to do a self-evaluation. What the self-evaluation is intended is for you to provide the highlights of your performance over the past year. I'm not here every day. I don't come into the office every day. I have a full-time job and other responsibilities, and so I'm not always informed of the minute things that clearly would be beneficial to you as someone is evaluating their performance. So, this is an opportunity, quite frankly, for you to shine and tell us those things that we don't necessarily notice or don't have knowledge of, aren't aware of. Maybe you went to a meeting with township officials and you accomplished something there. Well, then use that as an opportunity, quite frankly, to toot your horn. That's what the self-evaluation is about, and I think it's widely used, and I think it's a respected tool for council to use in seeing the big picture. I can sit here and say, okay, this is how the city manager performs when I call them, his responses at city council meetings, whether I've received information that I've asked for. That I can evaluate, but there's a lot going on that you do for the city that, quite frankly, I do not know. And as the chief operating officer, I am not a micromanager, and so I don't think there's any reason for me to know all the minute details of everything that you do every minute of every day. But there may be some hidden gems in there that would be very beneficial for us to know as we're evaluating. So, I think the self-evaluation is good. I think council is doing its job by asking it, asking for it, and I think this is, you know, try it. I mean, you know, if this doesn't work out, then reform it after your evaluation, we'll take another look at it. But it's a pretty simple process. It's not a real complicated process, and I hope that it doesn't get complicated tonight.
Councilmember Dilke.
Thanks. I don't think that maybe you're thinking about it a little differently. We talked about this a lot, and we were really hoping to give you an opportunity. It's not so that you can give us something that we can critique. It's you give it, we want to give you the opportunity to, you know, talk about what you've done. And I'm an executive at my job, and my boss doesn't micromanage me. He doesn't know half the things I do during the day or during the year. When he's going to do my evaluation, I would not be happy if I wasn't able to do my self-evaluation first, because it's nice for me to be able to say, hey, remember all this stuff I did? Or you might not even know this. And I know that our CEO, when he goes to the board for his evaluation, he does the same. They're not there all the time, and they can't know what the CEO is doing, and it's, maybe they should. Maybe they should know more. Maybe my boss should know more about what I do, but I appreciate the time that he can see me talking about the things that I've done. And without that, I think that my evaluation would be not as valuable. So, we took what you said at the last meeting, upset because you said we didn't take a lot of things into account that you've done throughout the year, and I, and we completely agreed with you. All of our meetings, we said that. We agree with you that we did not take into account those things, and I was honest and said, it's really hard for me to remember sometimes all that stuff because it is your job and we're not here all the time. So, let's give Paul a chance to let it, to remind us, to brag about himself a little bit, to talk about this, and then let us see it so that when we're doing the evaluation, we have that in front of us, not to critique you and not to be like, oh, Paul gave himself a six. I don't even care if you do numbers or whatever, just write stuff down. It's more for me to remember, and it might be something, you might say something, and I say, oh, I didn't know about that. I might call you and ask you about it, or I might say, oh, let me call the chief and ask her if she, you know, how this went. So, I think it gives us more information, and I think that we can only do a better job with that kind of information. So, that's where...
Just to follow on with what Councilmember Kurtzwell, Councilmember Dilke have said, the fact that you're doing your self-evaluation first doesn't preclude the opportunity for the council members to evaluate beyond that. I mean, it says in the next step, we're going to look at the things like they, you know, we all may be unaware of, because, you know, it's just a lot of work behind the scenes that some of us may not know about. But it also allows us, and expected, that each of the council members will go through and go through each of the sections and provide their own feedback for them, not just a critique of what you've provided. It complements what each of the council members would provide, basically. And again, I think, and I'm not sure, I think it was Councilmember Kurtzwell may have said it, that this may end up being a work in progress. Maybe we, you know, we dial it in after this first go-around, and we see if there's revisions that need to be made to make it a little bit smoother, whatever. It looks like it might be a more objective process for evaluation than the form that we've used in the past for years here. So, I for one would be, you know, happy to give this a shot. And again, I appreciate the efforts of the three council members who volunteered to do this almost a year ago. So, Councilmember Hanson.
Well, I was just going to make the comment, if, you know, moving up two weeks isn't feasible with, you know, timing and whatnot, we could always do like you suggested, making it any salary changes retroactive, and then maybe for twenty twenty-six, if we were to utilize this again, then, you know, have it at a, you know, earlier time, so...
And again, that's, you know, we don't have to make that call right now. We could, you know, make it at the time, you know, the city manager determines he's not going to make it by that time. We're going to need to extend it, and if we have to do it, we could make that adjustment at that time. Like I said, I think it's incumbent upon us to try to meet his anniversary date if we can at all do that. Okay? I mean, people look forward to that and everything that comes with it, so I'd like to see if we can meet it, but obviously, he's the first step in the process, and he's got to make that determination. He prioritizes what he's working on, and I fully expect that he'll do that reasonably. So, any other comments? Councilmember Kibble.
I'm just kind of curious, are your concerns about it, are looking at what you've put in there and trying to drag something out that might have selling, you know, what it is that you're putting together? No. My opinion on this is that I want each one of the council members to do their own evaluation of me, not to use my evaluation as a guide for determining what they write out, because the whole, it doesn't preclude, when you look at councils, each individual evaluation and my self-evaluation, which I said that I wanted to do, don't misinterpret that. I think the self-evaluation is good, but I think each council member's own objective opinion, our own objective view of what I've done within the past year, coupled with the information that I put in there, that you do within my review, makes the determination of how you think that I'm doing. I want it to be each individual council member to use the criterion that they think is important and how they see the city moving forward. My objection in last year's review was that I felt it was small items that council members were looking at, minor items, but nobody was talking about, you know, large, the capital improvement plan or the budgeting process or some of the other things. So, I want, I want, but each one of you to actually look at that, because I don't view this as just two or three goals and objectives. I think the goals and objectives section in this form also, I think, is not well-representation of what the manager does, because my job as city manager is to oversee the efficient operation of your municipality with fourteen thousand people, seventy to seventy-five employees in a seventeen million dollar budget, and a forty million dollar capital improvement plan within the laws of the state and within the ordinances of the city, and move it forward to put a few objectives or a few goals and say, we want this road done, or we want you to get more grants or that kind of thing. I don't really think is the big picture. That's just my opinion in looking at this, because when I put this together, when I gave it back to council or when I gave it back to the committee members back in March, I put this together saying, hey, these are the items that I think you should look at when you're doing the evaluation of me. It was not to be intended that I do an evaluation of me, of these items, and then council review that evaluation, and they get back with me. I don't see any reason why, because if we are in a short term or timeframe or whatever, that over the next four weeks or till the end of August, that both council and the manager do the evaluation of the manager, and then the clerk compiles that. If we don't feel like that is a good method, then potentially it's changing. But we are going from once, we are going a hundred and eighty degrees from what we've done in a prior year, from when council did a review to now the manager's doing a review, and the council's going to review the manager's, what he wrote on there. I mean, that's exactly what it says on here. Within two weeks, receiving the city manager's self-evaluation, council members will review and provide written feedback for each section of the form.
Right. It's so, I think you're misinterpreting this and making it too complicated. All we wanted was information from you on how you think you've done over the year, not so that we can then be like, oh, we can be lazy now, we can just repeat what Paul said. We're going to do our own evaluation, but we want, we agreed with you that, we did not think that, we talked about the capital improvement plan or the things that went well, and we just want you to have a chance, before we start evaluating you, to, you know, talk about the things that you have done over the year. And I guess I just don't even really understand why you wouldn't want to do that. I love that part of my evaluation. My boss still evaluates me. He still does his own evaluation. He just likes to look at what I've written out to kind of remind himself, like, oh, I totally forgot in January that Lisa revamped the whole website or whatever. So, that's all we're asking for, is we're not asking for you to do your own evaluation, and then we're just going to sit here and talk about it. We're going to still do an evaluation, and, but we're just asking for your input first so that we don't miss things like we did last year. That's what we're asking for.
Well, I'm sorry you don't understand, but you asked me, so that's my opinion. We have seven council members that have been reviewing the city's manager performance of the past year. We're not just talking one-on-one. We're talking seven. Seven members are going to look at what I wrote and then write their own evaluation. If seven council members can't write an evaluation on me, I mean, I'll be blunt. City council only has to hire, evaluate, motivate, and compensate one employee. That's me. I'm sorry, but I got to call you.
But what are you saying?
I want you to do that. Let me finish, please. I want you to do that for me. That's important. Each individual council member should be evaluating the city manager, not me writing the evaluation and telling you everything that I did. I'm okay in providing that, but that just coupled with all of your objective look at what I do to do my full review, not just what I wrote down.
Right. We are. I don't understand.
Why don't we do it at the same time?
Because we want you to remind you, we want you to be able to have the chance to say, hey, I did all these things that you might not even know about.
I'm sorry you forgot. I'm sorry you forgot. I really am. I'm being blunt here, I am.
I would never say that to my boss. I would never say that to my boss. I would never say it to my boss. I would say to him, hey, I want to make sure you remember these things I did all year and have him be like, yeah, okay. I have a lot going on, so I'm so glad you reminded me of that.
And I will do that. I will write an evaluation, but why can't you council write an evaluation of me prior to getting mine?
That doesn't make any sense.
It does. It worked the last six years. Why will it not work now?
It did not work.
Guys, guys.
That's the whole reason. That's the whole reason we're doing this, because, because it didn't work. You were mad last year, so we are trying to make it better.
Councilmember Do- one more.
Sorry.
Councilmember Kurtswell, you had a statement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sometimes change is difficult. And this is change. This is a different way, from your perspective, that your evaluation is being handled. Um, I want to see your self-evaluation. I want to use that as a backdrop to me framing my responses. I have my own items that, you know, I keep track of, um, throughout the year, but I don't know everything that you do. I think, uh, rather than getting upset, I think this is an opportunity to reflect on a new way of, of an evaluation. When I was in law firms, um, my, uh, self-evaluation had to be in almost, uh, four months ahead of my face-to-face, um, evaluation that I had with a partner or junior partner. That's the way it was. And that self-evaluation, I worked on all year long. So every month, I was updating my self-evaluation. I did this this month, I filed this motion, I won this case, um, I worked on this appeal. So I was constantly updating and, uh, preparing my self-evaluation for my bosses to take a look at. Um, particularly those that were evaluating me that weren't, that I wasn't under their direct supervision. Some of them, um, some of the partners evaluated on other criteria, um, other than just out in our job performance. So I think this process is a good process. We have some disagreement here on maybe how you think it's going to turn out. Um, I think give it a try and if you're correct, then we'll know in, in the, in October. And if we're correct, then we'll just modify this a little bit. But change is not always easy. And I say, give it a try. Just give it a try.
And I'm not upset with the change. What I'm upset with, as you just mentioned, if you had known that you were doing this evaluation, you were writing things down the whole year. Now council's asking me within a couple of weeks or a few weeks to start writing all this out and start figuring these things out. Council, you asked for my opinion and I'm giving you my opinion. Whether you understand it or not, this is a complete 180. And I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, you're, you're, you're bringing this up to me and I'm telling you my opinion on this because I just feel that council will not be doing, doing my evaluation correctly if they're not doing it independently on their own. But they're starting with a guide from me.
Well, I think you're incorrect in that assessment, number one. Um, but that's just the way it is and we can agree to disagree. Uh, so none of us are going to sit in a room and sit down and work out how we're going to fill this out. We all work independently. I, I would have the confidence that people on this council aren't going to sit around and share each other's comments, you know, that they'll sit down and, you know, take this responsibly and do it. As to the self-evaluation, I'll take that into, um, consideration. If you just want to highlight the major things that you've done this year, um, and then next year you'll be more prepared to do a more detailed self-evaluation, that's fine. But I'll take that into consideration, okay? But you did know that we wanted you to do a self-evaluation and that was early this spring. So it's not like this is news to you on the self-evaluation side. So, um, I, I say just give it a try. And, and we need to move on because we've spent a lot of time on this. I think you're probably going to be pleasantly surprised at the results. Um, I think sometimes when people panic and, you know, whatever. Um, I think sometimes you find out that, you sometimes jump the gun a little bit, but.
No one's panicking. You asked for my opinion and I gave you my opinion. We're talking about me, my evaluation and my livelihood. This, this is me as city manager. I'm sorry you felt that it take, took too much time, but this is extremely important to me.
And it's important to us, too.
So, let me just, let me just recap, okay, if we could. So, you know, we've.
Mr. Mayor, could I, just for a moment?
Let me finish, please. So we've had disagreements over the years with the, the previous tool that's been in use. Okay, previous administrations had it. Uh, it's used by other organizations, a number of other municipalities, et cetera. So the team, the, uh, the, the work group there made a, a good faith effort to modify it, to take other things into account. Uh, as we've talked about, it's a, it's a work in progress. We'll see how the, uh, the first go-around goes. We can certainly modify it. If it doesn't work out as expected, shame on us if it isn't adjusted, okay? So I'm willing to give this a shot. We'll see, you know, I mean, there's a lot of speculation here that it's not going to work. Uh, the proof's kind of in the pudding here, so let's, uh, I'm willing to, to give it a shot. I don't know where everybody else stands on it, but, uh, let's try, try it, see if it actually will deliver greater benefit. Any other comments? Councilmember Bogart.
Um, for me, it's not, um, borrowing a framework for evaluation. It's providing context. It's providing background and details that we may not see because we're not here on a day-to-day basis. But it may inform how we review larger scope things.
Councilmember Kibble.
Essentially, I, I can understand your, um, wondering whether or not it's a good thing for us to end up, uh, piggybacking off of what you're bringing up. But we've already done one on our own and I felt quite comfortable that I was talking about your role in this and things that I would like to see in the future. That's what I'm going to do again, if you want me to end up doing, doing it on my own again. So, um, if you want to, I think it would be in your best interest to make sure that everybody has the most distinguished idea of what you've put on the table from the last year so that we have things to talk about and things that we can, um, bring more to some of those things that have worked really well. So I think that would be helpful.
Councilmember Kurtswell.
Or another option could be, and you're free to call the, uh, city manager over in Novi. I did speak with one of the council members and I'm pretty sure he told me that they don't even do a, a written formal evaluation. They go into a closed meeting, they discuss and they walk out. I mean, that's it. And he's probably one of the most, uh, long-term city managers in the area. I think he's been there, I don't know, 10, 12 years or whatever. Highly paid, highly compensated, but he's in Novi, so he's got a lot on his table. Plus he has a, a deputy assistant. But my understanding is, and you can call him and ask him, um, closed meeting and they chat. You want that? I'm just saying.
So at, at this point, I'd be looking for a, a motion to move ahead, give this a shot and we'll see how it works out and, uh, be willing to revise, uh, as needed following the, uh, the evaluation. Councilmember Kurtswell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I move that the, uh, proposed performance, uh, city manager performance evaluation presented tonight, uh, be adopted.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Kurtswell, a second from Councilmember Dilg. Do we have any further discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote on this, please.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. And we'll, you know, as I mentioned, we would change that target delivery date, uh, for the, the first deliverable from, uh, August 31st, which is that Sunday, and in essence would be the first of September. The target date for that will be August 18th, which is a Monday. But again, Paul, if, um, you know, with everything else that you're juggling, I know you've got a lot on your plate right now. If that doesn't look, uh, to be doable as you, uh, move through the next few weeks, let us know. We can certainly adjust it. I'd like to make the target, uh, date for the October thing, if we can. But obviously, the compensation's going to be there if, if we make it or we don't make it, so.
I, I'm okay with moving it, leaving it at August 31st. The compensation is, is not the issue to me. So I have no problem in putting it, that's.
The point is, if we leave it at, at August 31st, we don't have the information there to have it in time for the meeting on the 22nd.
I, I, I understand that, but like I said, I'm not worried about the compensation. I'm worried about the evaluation.
Okay, all right, then we'll leave, we'll leave the dates as, as they are and.
We're in the process of hiring a lot of people right now, so this is a difficult time.
That'd be great. And, uh, and, yeah, that way you're not under the gun by any means to do it, so. All right, we'll leave the dates as they are. Uh, we, we may miss that target, uh, delivery date. Uh, I don't, I don't want to have an, an extra meeting, uh, for it if we don't have to, obviously. But, uh, uh, we'll give you the time that you need, obviously, to do the job. So I appreciate it. Moving on to new business number one, fire department radios. And we have Chief Conrad this morning, this evening.
Okay, agenda topic tonight is purchase of five Motorola radios. Currently, our department has 10 operational Motorola radios available for 20 non-officer staff members. This creates a significant communication and safety gap during emergency responses as not all personnel are equipped with a radio. The lack of adequate communication tools can hinder coordination, delay response efforts and increase risks on scene. Acquiring five additional Motorola radios will bring us closer to a one-to-one radio-to-person ratio, enhancing operational effectiveness, accountability and safety for all members during incidents. Funding was approved in the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the purchase of five Motorola radios in the amount of $50,000. The materials attached as supporting documents are the Motorola Solutions quote and a letter stating Motorola Solutions are the sole source provider for the MPSCS system for Oakland County. And I included an image of the radio we'd be purchasing. Possible courses of action, approve, not approve, the fire department's request to purchase five Motorola radios in the amount of $40,058.80 from Motorola Solutions, the sole source provider for the MPSCS system for Oakland County from line item 101-336-977. And I'm going to add another line in there, subject to review of the terms and conditions. I spoke with Lisa Hamami this evening and she has a few things on the contract that she wants to go over first.
Okay. She, you want to do that now? Or you, she wants to look at the contract before?
Correct, yes.
After it's approved?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can just add a comment?
Sure. Is your microphone on?
It's becoming more and more common where these quotes, although they say they're a quote, there is a very, 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 very small line in fine print at the very bottom that says, if you accept this quote, you've accepted all the terms and conditions on our website. Go here to check them out. And it's, it's, I think that's what's happening here. It's the same thing that we've seen in the past. And so there are some concerning provisions in the terms and conditions, so we'd like the opportunity to negotiate some of them, understanding we're going to need it. Um, but if we can negotiate some of those terms, that would be ideal.
Okay, so we can approve it, subject to the, uh, the review and approval of the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need to, uh, to make a motion and, uh, for the, the sole source provider on this? Is that going to be required for this or not? That we don't have competitive bids because they are the only provider?
If that's in your rules of procedure, then, then your administrative policies, then it's probably better to do that.
Okay. Okay. Who wants to bring it to the floor with a motion and a second to start the thing?
Do you want a motion first for the sole provider rule or?
Sure, let's go with that one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve the, um, waiver of the sole provider, uh, rule since this is the only provider of such radios.
I'll support.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Dilg. Any discussion regarding the sole provider waiver? Okay, City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this, please.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
And I'll look for a, uh, motion to, for the purchase of the radios and bring that to the floor. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the fire department's request to purchase five new Motorola radios in the amount of $40,058.80 from the sole source provider of Motorola for the MPSCS system for Oakland County from line item 101-336-977, subject to the review of the disclosures by the city attorney.
I'll support.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Dilg. Any further discussion related to this? Councilmember Dilg?
I just have a quick question. You said, um, you were going to, this gets you closer to one-on-one?
Yes.
Um, tell me what is, what would get, how many more would you need for everyone to have one?
We need one radio for every firefighter and officer, so.
So how many would you need?
That, that changes by, by hiring and people leaving. So right now, we have 28 employees and this will just get us closer to that number.
What's the, how, what's the number that we?
So if we get five now and we have 10, I'm trying to think how many officers we have right now that have radios. Three, six, seven, eight. We have 18 and then five more. So we'd need seven more to cover, or, or five more to cover 28 people. But the number can change. We could hire two more people and then somebody could leave.
I just would love to see us get even closer so that we can.
The radios are very expensive, unfortunately.
Correct, yes. Okay, I just wanted to know how many more we would need. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this, please.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Move on to new business number two, fire department turnout gear.
Thank you for radios. Uh, purchase eight sets of turnout gear. Uh, purchasing eight sets of turnout gear to support firefighter safety and ensure proper rotation and replacement of aging gear. Due to manufacturer price increases since the budget was finalized, only seven sets would be able to be purchased to remain within the allocated budget. While this still improves our overall inventory, it falls short of the intended goal. Funding was approved in the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for eight sets of turnout gear in the amount of $24,000. Uh, materials attached are the R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair Quote for eight sets of turnout gear and an image of the gear we currently use. Uh, course of action is approve or not approve the fire department's request to purchase eight sets of turnout gear in the amount of $25,709 from R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair, who's the sole source provider for Viking gear in Michigan from line item 101-336-721.
So I'm looking to start off with, let's get the, uh, sole source provider. Let's make sure that we're covered on that. Who's, uh, I need a motion and a second for that. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion, uh, to waive the requirement for three competitive bids for the sole source provider rule.
I'll support, sorry.
A motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Dilg. Any further discussion related to the sole source provider? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this one, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurtswell?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
I'll be looking for a motion to bring it to the floor to make the purchase. Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the fire department's request to purchase eight sets of turnout gear in the amount of $25,709 from R&amp;R Truck Repair, the sole source provider for Viking turnout gear in Michigan from line item 101-336-721.
A motion from Councilmember Bogart, a second from Councilmember Kibble. Do we have any discussion regarding this particular item? Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry I'm talking so much today.
That's okay.
But, um, when I saw the, um, motion, when I saw this come out, um, last week, I did talk to the city manager and I was really concerned about the fact that we weren't going to be able to order the eight that you wanted. So I'm just going to say that if we think that we need eight and, um, we had budgeted for it and it went up, I would, I mean, I appreciate any fiscal responsibility, but I would just say, ask for it and see, see what we can do.
I appreciate that, thank you very much.[1745.68]
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Because, I mean, we want to make sure, there's almost nothing more important than making sure our firefighters are safe.
I appreciate that.
So let's make sure we ask for that in the future.
Any other discussion? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this, please.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. And I'll be looking for a motion to address the budget amendment. Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend the general fund fiscal year 2025-2026 budget under GL account line item 101-336-721 from $45,381 to $47,100 to reflect the increase in price for the purchase of eight sets of Viking turnout gear from R&amp;R Truck Repair.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Bogart, a second from Councilmember Hanson. Any further discussion regarding the budget amendment? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for that, please.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much. Thanks a lot, Chief.
Thank you very much.
New business number three, budget amendments.
Good evening, council. Tonight, I'm presenting our fiscal year 2425, so our previous fiscal year's budget amendments, the final ones, so we can help close out the fiscal year with our auditors next month. Fiscal year 2425 budget amendments totaling $129,725 from general fund expenditures, $2,565 for cemetery perpetual care fund revenues, and $14,505 for cemetery perpetual care fund expenditures. I have attached budget amendment explanation for the general fund and the cemetery perpetual care fund for your review, and the amended department budget spreadsheets. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the budget amendments.
So I'd be looking for a motion to bring this to the floor for discussion. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget amendments.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Hanson, a second from Councilmember Bogart. Do we have any discussion, any questions for the Finance Director? Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, two points, I guess maybe three. On the, your discussion on page one, you talk about the two train furnaces and AC units donated by Henman Engineering, thank you, and we approved the payment of the installation fees at the October council meeting. So why are we just now getting the amendment?
I waited and did not do a mid-year amendment because I didn't have any additional budget amendments at that time, and I knew we were looking to do possibly some additional work at the historical village, so I wanted to wait, so we wouldn't have to do two budget amendments for that department budget.
Because sometimes it's hard to keep track of this. You know, when the budget, it's just my opinion, but I understand your reasoning. Sometimes it's hard to keep track of all the amendments when the paperwork doesn't follow at the time that we go and we approve it.
Oh, absolutely.
So I'm just saying, for me, I'm a student of the budget, so I kind of like having that paperwork a little bit more current rather than delayed.
Absolutely.
So that's just sort of my issue on that one.
No, I agree. Ultimately, what would be ideal, like Fire Chief Conrad did tonight, was we would include the budget amendment with the agenda note, but unfortunately, that did not happen back in October.
That was, well, I'll get to that. And then I noticed, of course, you know, you're on the budget amendments. The budget amendments are dealing with both expenditures and revenues. So you did provide the expenditure page, which was good, because you can kind of see how the expenditures are rolling through. But I did not see an updated revenue page. So I don't have an updated, maybe it was there, and it's not with mine.
Are you talking about for the general fund or for the cemetery perpetual care week?
General fund.
Okay, I did not include that because there was no changes made to that. And it was provided with, at the last council meeting, to close out the June 30, 2025 financial report.
But you have expenditures here. So why did the general fund not change?
Well, the revenue did change, just the expenditures, because I'm requesting the amendments on the.
But then your revenue changed. It looks like you have an increase due to the interest rate.
That is for cemetery perpetual fund, and that sheet was included.
Okay, all right, so that one.
Yes.
Okay, got that.
That's a different fund.
Okay. So then, exactly, this is what I was going to get to with tonight, is it would have been nice to have that page, so that you can track it immediately, rather than waiting six months, you know, for the amendment to show up.
Oh, I absolutely agree. That's my preference, and the department has to know. That's my preference.
But that's just my two cents. But you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Finance Director? City Clerk Deaton, if you'll lead us in a roll call vote for this, please.
Kurtschwell?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kibble? Hanson?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes. Thank you very much, Patricia.
Thank you.
Before we leave, let's just see if there's any further discussions relative to the budget.
No, but I really like, every time you're here, you're just right on the money. And I really enjoy that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. That's all we have.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council has two minutes to do so. Please state your name and address for the city clerk, if you would.
Hi, my name is Annette LaBarren. I actually live in White Lake. I'm here representing Senator Runstedt's office. I wasn't planning on making any comments today, but when the topic came up of evaluations, I couldn't help but feel compelled to say something. I've spent over 30 years in human resources prior to joining Senator Runstedt's office in automotive. Feel very comfortable in terms of understanding how the process works, but thought I'd lend just a few comments. First of all, self-evaluations are very common in the industry, and it's normal that one provides a self-evaluation in advance. It's a great opportunity for one to reflect and clearly outline what was accomplished in the year. It's an effective way of letting leaders know what was accomplished. The other thing, though, I want to mention is that sometimes what also is common is mid-year or quarterly reviews. Just more touch points. They're not as elaborate as a final review, but there's touch points. And the reason for that is, you don't want any surprises. There should be open communication at all times, and nobody should receive a final evaluation with surprises in it. So that's the other thing. And then the last comment I'm going to make is, I didn't know, not familiar with your process, but are there seven separate evaluations, or do you consolidate it down to one? Because sometimes seven could be maybe overwhelming. So that's just a couple of comments I wanted to make, and thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, we will close public comment and move on to the manager's report.
A few items. The road improvement project continues. They're working at Eagle Heights subdivision. They've already completed the first layer of asphalt throughout the whole subdivision. They're currently making additional curb and sidewalk improvements, and they are expected to complete the top layer of asphalt in the subdivision this week. We are working on the waste hauling contract. I've been working with our attorney and the representatives, ARsak, to develop an RFP for waste hauling in South Lyon. Once we get that finalized, we'll get a draft copy to city council. The RFP will go out, expect it sometime in September, due in November, and followed up with a selection of a waste hauler in early 2026. Also, I want to, I've mentioned a prior council meeting that Nate McCarthay, DDA Economic Development Director, his last day is August 15th. I want to recognize Nate for all his hard work within the community over the last five years in DDA and economic development, his contribution to our community, his creating new events in the community, the obtaining of hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants for the city, and his work will be missed. And the last item, I want, I want to make reference to a comment that the mayor had make, had made, that we'll make sure that the porta potty is there this weekend, and as the mayor put it, is good to go.
Literally and figuratively. Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for the city manager? Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, just a quick question in regards to the DDA director position. You said it was posted. Is it on, like, LinkedIn, Indeed?
It was posted with the Michigan Municipal League, as well as on the city website, and the applications are, or the resumes are due by August 1st.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I live right behind where the road improvement projects are going on, and they, it just looks fabulous. It was, it was falling apart. That was one of the worst after Haggadorn in the city. So it looks great. I walk through there all the time. I talk to some of the guys working on the thing, just tell them it was, they're doing a great job, and it's going so fast. So I just wanted to say that was great. And I just wanted to also say to you and to DPW, thank you for coming and filling the potholes in my neighborhood, because they were extensive, and they actually hit a couple others that I didn't notice, that I didn't mention before. So just wanted to say thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Kibble.
I was, just happened to notice that there is a new billboard on the billboard. How long do you figure this is likely to end up going on?
It could go on for months, unfortunately. They're, they do not want to stop the contract, and we are sending things back and forth with our attorney and their attorney, and the court's signing to it. So I'm sure the city attorney can give an update if council wants to at a meeting or provide an update within a, with a letter to council.
I'm just, I'm kind of taken, taken aback that, you know, they've already reached the contract, and now they're doing it again, only much more blatantly. I just don't get that.
Yeah, they refused to agree to the terms of the contract, how we wanted to end the contract, according to the stipulations are within the agreement, and unfortunately, that's why we're in court.
Is there a sense of when we might end up getting relief?
I can't give exact dates right now, but I would expect it still to be.
I mean, are they taking it seriously? I mean, is the judge taking it seriously?
They're taking it very seriously. They want to continue. But we'll bring something back to council, hopefully, within the next few meetings.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager this evening? Okay. Thank you very much, Paul. At this point, we'll open it up for council comments, and we'll start with Councilmember Kibble this evening.
Well, the city was a lit all week long, so, or all weekend long, at least. And it was very nice. I would like to end up just thanking Deb and Doug for the car shows. I mean, that was very cool. We got a real break for the weather, and it was a very nice weekend. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I also would agree that this was a great weekend to be in South Lyon. In fact, I had the pleasure of being able to emcee concerts in the park on Friday night, and they had a great crowd, very well attended despite the humidity. And everybody was just very excited about starting their weekend at nine o'clock in the morning in South Lyon and not moving their car until midnight. I mean, it was just a great weekend to be in South Lyon, and this weekend's going to be the same thing. And I would also like to thank our sponsors that helped with the Lake Street Cruisin' this meeting. I'd like to thank Painter's Supply and Equipment, they're from Taylor, Quicksilver Marketing Solutions, they're over in Brighton, Our Creations from Howell, and Shadow Rods from Saginaw. And I can't tell you the amount of individuals that are sponsoring the Lake Street Cruisin' that are not from the city of South Lyon. So I want to thank particularly those that are out of town, that are coming into our city and seeing value in sponsoring events. We have other events going on, but to Painter's Supply and Equipment and Quicksilver, what a great company Quicksilver is, Our Creations and Shadow Rods, thank you so much for making an investment in our city. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Bogart.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few items here. I, too, had a great weekend. Motor Fest was really cool. Magic Bus was a big hit with the crowd later in the day. Christmas in July, lots of fun. The bed races were fun to see. I got to see Councilmember Dilg.
I was only a sponsor.
Are you going pro?
Lots of fun. Everyone had a great time. And then on August 27th, South Lyon Area Youth Assistance will be having its back-to-school shopping program to provide gift cards for shopping for school clothes and school supplies. There's currently 40 kids on the waiting list. There is a fundraiser on Youth Assistance Facebook page and also on my page. I encourage you to consider supporting this program. Also, I'd like to thank Officer Walton for his service to the community. And finally, don't leave your keys in the car overnight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick note for me. It was a great weekend in South Lyon. My wife and I have had friends from Japan visiting with their kids, and it was perfect timing to bring them downtown to not only see, you know, the farmer's market, but, gosh, live music at the same time, as well as to represent American vehicles downtown and to folks from out of town. So it was a great time. They had a blast. Got to showcase, you know, our parks, our downtown, and the great community that we have here in South Lyon. So thanks to all the volunteers that helped put it on, and the folks, the plan they invented, all kind of came together, and it was great to see. So with that, I look forward to this weekend, to once again have another great weekend downtown. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Obviously, it was a good weekend. I thought it was very interesting online that it's gone now from, we don't do enough stuff in South Lyon, to people arguing who's getting the better advertising for their events. So obviously, we have a lot going on. It was really fun. I'm not even a car person, and I loved the car show. I also wanted to thank Jeff Heinonen for his work for the Christmas in July. It was really great. The whole DDA board stepping up and making that a great event. We had a really, really good time. Also, all the volunteers that showed up and helped sell tickets and pour beer and do everything else that they were doing. I really appreciate that as well. And I think there was, oh, and then I also wanted to thank Nate for all of his contributions. Hopefully, we'll be able to talk more at the next meeting, but just really appreciate all you've done and all the, the events and everything else that you've helped bring to South Lyon. So I really appreciate that. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Tonight, I want to remind everyone that this week, we will have the Detroit Blue Social Club performing at the Concert in the Park on Friday from 7:00 PM until 8:30 PM. So make plans to come to the Historic Village for a great night of entertainment. Also, as has been mentioned, that By Michigan Now Festival kicks off this Friday and runs through Sunday. It's going to feature a large group of exhibitors selling products and services from across Michigan. It kicks off on Friday from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM. So make plans now to bring the family to downtown South Lyon. There's going to be something there for everybody. And finally, don't forget that the South Lyon Farmer's Market will take place on Saturday, as usual, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM. It's that time of year when there will be a great selection of produce, baked goods, cheeses, and, and more. So add it to your schedule for this, this coming weekend. It's going to be a great time to be in downtown South Lyon. And with that, I will look for a motion and a second to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtschwell.
Move to adjourn. Support?
Very good. We will see you on August 11th. Thank you very much, folks.